Okay, I think that we will get going. We have, let's go having a not very full agenda to quite a full agenda, so don't waste any time. I'd like to begin by acknowledging that we are here on the homelands of the Calipari peoples, which was in the Chamoferlands and also the Alsee peoples, all of whom after the conclusion of the Wurundjeri Treaty ended up in smaller reserved territories and are now part of the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ronde and of the Confederated Tribes of Celest, and honor their spirit of taking care of the place we live and hope to continue to do that in consultation with the tribes as we move forward. I'm Andrew, Board Chair, and I would like to open the board to interjections. Nancy White, Commissioner and Vice Chair.
Hello, Pat Malo, Commissioner.
Good morning, Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
Vance Corning, County Council.
Teresa Farley, Board of Commissioner's Staff.
Erica Milo, Board Recorder.
All of the rest, Public Information Office then.
Jennifer Arshol, Benton County Sheriff.
Okay, Jenny?
No, this is for now, or my name is Jenny Glass. I am the Economic Development Director with Oregon County Department of Government.
Welcome. Okay, are there any announcements this morning? Hearing none, we'll move on. Are there any comments from the public? There are comments from the public, this is the time to do so. Okay, hearing none, we will move forward. Would you like to speak?
Yes, I would just like to address the recent mandates on the county level as far as the masking indoor and outdoor.
Can I interrupt you for just a moment, please, to ask you to introduce yourself for the record?
My name is Melinda Skinner. I'm a resident here in Corvallis. And I just have some concerns that the public at large is really being disturbed by some of these rules, mostly because outdoor, there's really no concrete evidence of spread of the coronavirus. And so I just feel like everybody should be represented because the workers and the public who aren't involved in leadership positions and at the universities aren't being 100% represented by some of these rules. Our voices should be heard and so, you know, these people are the most impacted because they're the ones that have to go to work every day and have to deal with the public having issues with masking and all of this stuff. So I really feel like that my optic view of the coronavirus is creating a problem for other public health issues, including suicide, depression, anxiety, businesses that are going out of business because they can't keep up with the varying changes that keep going on and off all the time. And then the children, you know, they're really not at risk at this point, no greater risk than having a seasonal flu every year. So I feel like a lot of these COVID-19 restrictions are really inhumane. And so I know personally for myself, I can't wear the mask. So for me, it's really prohibitive. So, and I just wanted to give you back on what the Benton County Public Health Office has on their website as far as the impact of, well, I guess it's not really the impact of COVID-19 deaths. The actual death rate really is quite a bit lower this year and is on track to be about 100 or 150 people less than those that died in the past two years. About 100 people left that have died, that are on track to die this year as compared to the years from 2019 to 2015. So, you know, that's really, going back to the COVID numbers, of those 2.3% are attributed to COVID. So, and those may not even necessarily be that there are COVID deaths per se, but maybe COVID tested, but died from something else. So, you know, and I'm just arguing the point that, you know, there's 80% of the Benton County residents that have been vaccinated and over 96% of those over 75-year-olds have also been vaccinated. So I feel like a lot of what the mandates, the mandates that were being imposed now are based more on fear and not really understanding the true impact of what's going on in the community versus, you know, the fact. Because I think the facts say that really in our county, the risk is very low.
Thank you. I'm going to wrap this so that we can start.
So I just would like you to consider the whole of your population because there's a lot of us that have a problem with the different mandates that are being imposed by both the county and state level. Thank you.
Thank you. I wish I felt as comfortable with the facts as you did. The measures that we've taken, we've taken in order to keep our doors open on businesses and in order to make sure that kids can go back to school and be in school in person and to keep the hospital system going. And so I apologize, I'm sorry that if you can't wear a mask, it's a little bit of a stonewall, but that is one of the best mitigation measures we have right now. But I appreciate you coming to talk to us and with anything you need.
Thank you, and I was, can I add, or, so I just wanted to add that, you know, I am a university student, I have done the reading, I read lots of textbooks and I don't just rely on CDC. So I do have a fairly well-rounded idea of what's going on in our world. And I think that, you know, you can't really throw in the hospital capacity issue without acknowledging that the staff of hospitals are being threatened with their jobs. And so that's a core point to lower capacity because if you don't have staff, because they refuse to submit to the vaccination process, then, you know, you're going to have less ability to deal with cases or actually just in any situation, it doesn't even matter whether it's COVID or anything else.
Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, our next item of business is to review and approve the agendas. At this point, we have two additions to the agenda. We have--
Is there any more public comment?
Excuse me?
Is there any more public, I'm just figuring out how to work this out.
Okay, yes, I have time for one more public comment at this time and then due to a full agenda, we're going to keep going. And if you could, your comments took three minutes and I didn't--
I tried. I tried. Okay, hopefully it's three minutes. Hi, my name is Vicki, I called Corvallis to my home, I moved here in '18 after losing everything in the Paradise, California campfire. So Corvallis was warm and welcoming until spring of 2020 and then it became apparent a few months thereafter into the pandemic that Benton County was not interested in upholding the rights of the constitutions and of the disabled. I can't wear face covering for disability and religious reasons. So one of the worst parts of being here in the past eighteen months is being ignored by elected public servants. I tried communicating many times, but little to no response and never did I think our five rights to the First Amendment would be denied. But apparently I was wrong. So if I may, here are some of my grievances for this county, for Corvallis. Number one, no mandatory healthcare mandates for all humans in this county. Number two, all individuals need to be informed they may run their businesses within a letter of the law without threat of penalty. Number three, no TRT, in my estimation, instills racism, does not promote a unifying equality of all races and it divides and separates us, in my estimation. No matter what science or public health believes to be the best for all humans, each one must make their own choice for their own bodies. And as I said, it's your job to uphold this sovereignty of all humans that live in Benton County. That's the two you serve. And if you don't, then this is probably not a job that you belong in. There's too many reasons I express these grievances. Because I want to follow the rights in our state and federal constitutions until they've been amended, you know, unless they get amended. And number two, ignoring these grievances has a high potential for overarching dire consequences for all of humanity on our planet. And if I may, I wanted to read something from yet another concerned American who's able to read, who's been able to read the writing on the wall and particularly the small print on the wall and has enough courage to speak out about it. This was written on June 28, 2021, and I quote, "Who would have thought just a couple of years ago that we would be facing this level of unconstitutional surveillance whereby your health is on full display and entry into civilization is thwarted potentially by a little thing called vaccine ID passports?" "The fact is that many of us saw this coming and have been mourning of it for quite some time." "One big tip-off is ID 2020, which was launched in 2016 by nine others, and Bill Gates, Gaby, and Microsoft, the Rockefeller Foundation, and others." "How pathetic of them to nail down the year 2020 as a need for additional ID solution and launch their, quote, certification, unquote, approval for stakeholders to get to work on technology apps as early as 2019, ahead of schedule." "All of this was part of their great overall, overall, great recent agenda with their full intention of implementing digital IDs that go far beyond the COVID-19 element and will incorporate additional data on each individual while tying in their social score, climate score, and finances as well." "Now, if that's the kind of tech that you want controlling humanity, then keep on doing what you're doing as far as carrying out the way that the county is run during this very, very pressing and serious time that we're living in now." "I don't want to live by that kind of tech control. I see this huge breach of our free will and sovereignty and the opposite of what this country was founded on." "And I am a retired RN and there is very little to know scientific evidence, which I've been researching my butt off about, if you can imagine being an RN, about masks being any kind of an effective mitigation measure." "Sorry, they're not, they're great for surgeons, they're great for when you have to go into an infection-controlled room, an isolation room, in a hospital or emergency room, that is it." "So it's imposing mild asphyxiation on our population, which is a very, very, very unhealthy measure." "And I'm probably close to three minutes, so thank you for your time."
Thank you, I appreciate your concern. I don't think any of us want that technological future that you outlined. Thank you. We'll move on with our reading at this time. We, in terms of the agenda, as I mentioned before, we'll have two executive sessions today. One with respect to the criminal justice system's work and the other with respect to labor negotiations. So at this point, we'd like to move on with our work session. I do understand that there's one more person interested in speaking. If you can keep it to three minutes, end by 9:20, we will hear you. Please identify yourself with your full name, if you remember.
Oh, this is Palmer Vellaghi. Thank you for letting me speak. I just wanted to say that I'm in agreement with the first two speakers there. I think that they made a lot of really good points. I think that Benton County, of all the counties in Oregon, has been some of the most draconian measures that I agree have also been based on fear. You know, not really what's best for the citizens here in the community. So, you know, these mandates, you guys got to understand, and I agree with the last gal that was sharing, Vicki, that, you know, we've emailed you guys so many times with little to no response about this. These things are not law, they're not statutory law. A governor cannot make a law without the legislative session happening, and that does not happen. She has run out of time and she's running rampant through the state trying to be a queen dictator and you guys are just going along with it and it's not right, that these are not laws. We are nation founded on laws, not mandates, not suggestions, not recommendations. Everybody's kind of lost sight of what the foundation is of a law. And so in addition, the first gal was sharing how you agree that, you know, masks are not effective. I also can't wear a mask for religious and medical reasons. And you guys should be promoting exemptions, you know. Recently, I had a heck of a time trying to be able to get my concealed handgun license. I know Sheriff Jeff is on the line here. And it should not take pulling teeth like that to be able to get your freedom, you know. You guys make exceptions for all kinds of other people with disabilities while before COVID. It should be the same now and we should have a choice, you know. And it shouldn't be like trying to find this loophole, trying to do all day to find a way to be able to come to a public accommodation. Sheriff's Office, all the government buildings are public accommodations, just like stores. And you guys need to be following the ADA and respecting the civil rights of the people. This is basically the flu for most people. And as the first speaker shared, there's no excess mortality in Benton County. So look at the writing on the wall, stop this charade in pretending that there is a real pandemic here when there's no excess mortality. In fact, in Oregon, there's no excess mortality. That is a true indicator, if there was a real pandemic, you know, people are not falling over in the streets dying, like, come on, get real and wake up, please, for the fact that this is about control and you guys are being like pawns manipulated by greater powers to achieve a communist agenda. And look what's going on in Portland, look at the lawlessness of Antifa, look at all the stuff that they're getting away with, all because, you know, we have a governor and we have elected officials that are just going along with it. Is that really how you guys want to feel at the end of the day? That you just were manipulated and told what to do for a greater communist agenda? Or, come on, like, I want to be able to go into a store and not be harassed to get food for my family? You know, this has gone on too long, too long.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move on with our agenda. And the first agenda item in our work session is the Cascade West Council of Governments Quarterly Report. Jenny?
Hi, thank you. Good morning, Commissioner. As I introduced myself earlier, my name is Jenny Glass. I'm the Community and Economic Development Director with Oregon Cascade West Council of Government. And I also have with me, here's my Chris Nelson, who's a veteran sheriff's officer for at least a few more days. And we are here, Ryan and both are executive directors on vacation. We're just going to give a quick update and then we're probably a little bit short on time this morning, so we'll be pretty brief. I just want to introduce myself. I have had a chance to meet a few of you and work with a few of you. I'm pretty new, I started in January this year and so--
Jenny? Jenny, I'm going to interrupt you for just a sec because there's someone that doesn't have their mic off and we're getting quite a bit of feedback and it's making it difficult for us to understand you.
Okay.
Could all participants, including those calling in on the telephone, please mute themselves if they're not speaking? Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Let me know if you can't hear me. So, yeah, as I was saying, I started in January and have been warmly welcomed internally with our team at CAH but also externally with many folks from around the region and really looking forward to supporting economic development efforts, transportation and saving efforts around the region. And I had an opportunity to get out and visit a few places in Lynn County, but I haven't gotten too many incentives, so I'm looking forward. I've been doing what I'm calling Field Day Fridays, visiting different communities on Fridays. And the recent surge in COVID cases have hampered my ability to do that a little bit, but I'm looking forward to getting out more in Benton County. So if you all have any communities or any ideas of places and people that I should visit, please let me know. On the commonwealth level, I just want to say, you know, I think for everyone, we are also struggling with all things COVID still and the return to the office that we began this summer was halted pretty quickly as the cases rose. So we are still serving clients from our center and often use that this kind of slow, the return to the office and moving communities, you know, almost everything. We do keep our tooling. And from my department, from the community, I can smell the discomfort. We have some very exciting programs that are available out this spring, summer. Got some extra funding from the CARES Act and we are able to do small grants that we've developed through our regional partners, a couple of which were Cholod's projects, the two of those projects in Benton County and Cholod's project. So we did, we funded an economic development plan in Monroe. It was very exciting, a prize to be given. And then for Benton County, we are doing a business portal, which hopefully you have heard of, but it's an online resource for business and, you know, all things from startups to growing and marketing their business. And we're hopeful that that will help support the community of our community in Benton County. In your packet, you've got some updates and the other updates from our team around transportation. I know we're doing Cholod's, it's also a planning organization. We're doing an update to the regional transportation plan. I know Commissioner Malone could probably give everyone a great update on that. And the other updates from our team, you can find in the memo. Alicia wasn't able to join us from the Senior Disability Services Program, but there's info in there and we are available if you have any questions at all and I give those items. And other than that, I think I'll just, I'll pass over-- other than that, I think I'll just, I'll pass over to Curtis and he can give you an update on the veterans services. Thank you.
I have a question, please.
Yeah.
Jenny, would you, uh, give a little more detail on the, uh, grant for the business portal? What does that entail?
Yeah, uh, so they are just getting started. I know the grant itself was just under, um, just under $5,000. And it's, it will be an online portal. Um, you know what I'm gonna do is copy and paste this short paragraph into the chat. Um, but essentially a resource portal that businesses can go to to navigate different services that are available, like, um, capital resources or technical assistance. Um, but it's all Benton County focused, so the resources will be very relevant and very up to date for the businesses in Benton County.
You're welcome.
Yeah, you're welcome. Any other questions?
Not at this time. I'm, I'm happy to hear about the camp of, of planning update, and I've appreciated the, um, information in your written report. Um, Nancy, do you have any questions? Okay, we'll move on to Curtis.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for having me today. I am Curtis Nelson. I'm the supervisor for the Veterans Program, uh, under the CAG Veterans Service Office. Uh, you guys have my report that I submitted. I just want to kind of point out a few things, um, regarding that. The VA currently, uh, is still doing our CNP exams. So last year around this time, they shut those down. The CNP exams are compensation intervention exams. So any of our veterans who file a claim have to go to those exams to be looked at. Um, they had stopped those last year, and now they're redoing those. They are still doing those even with the pandemic, pandemic going on. So we're very thankful for that. Um, they also are not recouping, the VA is not recouping any late payments or overpayments to the veterans. So if a veteran accidentally gets paid or loses their benefits, they're not going after them at this point. They're letting them keep that money. They're helping them set up debt management sort of stuff and, and, uh, and helping them figure out a way to make those payments down the road. So they're pushing that sort of stuff out for them. Um, looking at our report, you can see that the, the theme that we had been talking about, uh, over this year with the whole pandemic is, Oregon Department of Veteran Affairs, they're still working remotely. So the major hurdle that we're having is when the mail comes into them, that's how the VA, um, uh, submits things and, and gets recoveries and monies out to the VA and our veterans. And so the hard part is, is there's nobody in the VA, ODVA office in Portland, so the mail is piling up. So like, like I've been briefing you for the past year, we, we knew this day was coming. Um, on our charts, it shows our recoveries that are trending are very, very low. Um, but I even pulled the report again recently, and from third quarter to this quarter, those numbers have gone up even more. So they're gonna continue to go up. The veterans are still getting their money. They're bringing that money into the county still. It's just ODVA is not able to get in and update that in the system because there's nobody in the office to handle the mail. They're, they're getting it once a month, and then one individual scanning 1,200 a day or, or however many it is. And so they're not able to keep up with that. But, um, every day, they scan more. Every month, they scan more. So that, those numbers will continue to rise. We're still putting in the work. Veterans are still getting money. It's just the numbers aren't gonna match because they're not able to get the mail and actually update, uh, the reports in the system. We, we've actually asked ODVA for permission to do that because a lot of our veterans will bring in those reports to us and we'll see that they're getting the money. And we don't have the permissions to update that. So that might be a question, uh, if you guys meet with ODVA to ask them, uh, if they're gonna be able to rectify that anytime soon. Um, that's, the other good thing that I would want to talk about is if you looked at our interviews, we actually had 180 interviews last, this last quarter. So that's basically back on average for us. Uh, that's a good sign. Everybody's kind of getting used to the normal now of where we do business via phone, via Zoom, uh, via email. Um, we've really got the word out to our veterans where to bring their forms, how to get in contact with us. So, uh, that number has jumped back up to around our average of 180 interviews, and we're happy for that. Uh, is there any questions for me at this point?
I have one question. I was just a little confused about your, uh, contact, um, bar charts, the client contacts by type.
Yes.
It mentions that, um, you're counting all the virtual appointments as walk-ins, but they're color-coded as in-office appointments. So I just was confused about, um, what, so what, how to interpret that?
Yeah, so we, we unfortunately, we haven't changed that. We, we keep hoping that things will get back to normal. So we, we actually haven't updated that to show, uh, you know, Zoom or via phone. Um, but those are, all those that are blue, you can see kind of when COVID started that they all just changed to blue. And so we just kind of kept them as in-office interviews because I guess we consider working from home our office and we're meeting with those veterans. But I can talk to Alicia and maybe we can go ahead and get that changed, uh, so you guys can understand better. But yeah, we're just, um, marking any appointments that we have now with veterans as in-office because that was what was created on the spreadsheet previously. So we can look at that for sure.
Okay, it'd be a little more informative to, to know. Um, but thank you. And Curtis, congratulations on your new role. I'm sorry we're gonna be losing you. Um, and I do understand that, um, the hiring process is still underway?
Yes, ma'am. Um, we're actually gonna be doing the interviews this week. I'm a part of that, helping them out, helping find my replacement. We've got a, a few good candidates. We're pretty excited about that. Um, just a side note, I will be staying local, so hopefully you guys will see me with my new role. But, uh, I want to thank the CAG. I want to thank the Commissioners, the county, our veterans, for this opportunity. You know, me being a veteran and being able to serve our veterans in our local community was very heartwarming for me and something that I really took pride in. And so I want to, you know, do the best that I can to leave this program at the highest end that it is and, and help them continue to hold that. So thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you. We've really appreciated your, your help and service.
Thanks. Any other questions for me?
Okay. I guess not at this time. Thank you. Much appreciated. And you, you both did save us a fair bit of time. So thank you for that, too. Jenny, welcome. I'll follow up with you, um, about your Fridays and, uh, see, um, what kind of, uh, trouble we can help stir up. Okay. Um, let's see. Moving onward, uh, the next update we have is from the Corvallis Benton County Public Library, and Ashley Chavez has joined us. And I believe there were going to be some library board members, but I'm not sure.
Oh, it's just me today, Sam. Um, I did have a presentation. I'm not sure if that's gonna pop up here or not, but if not, I can just go off the mark.
Just one moment, and I'll have you ready for that.
Thank you. Well, first, I just want to say thank you for having me. Um, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Ashley Chavez. I'm the library director. I have been with Corvallis Benton County Public Library for, uh, four and a half years now. And it was just, let me think, um, I think it was maybe two and a half years ago, we decided to start doing an annual presentation to, uh, the Benton County Commissioners. It's not something we had really done previously, uh, but I think it's just a really great opportunity for all of us to get on the same page and, you know, for you to hear about what's going on at the library, ask questions, um, kind of understand the structure, especially as Commissioners, um, rotate and change. And it's just nice to kind of, I really understand the complexity of our system. Uh, but unfortunately, we, we didn't come last year, um, you know, with things with the pandemic. We kind of kept putting it off thinking we would, uh, get back to in-person meetings, but here we are. So I actually have, I'm just gonna update you, starting sort of beginning of the pandemic, things we did, um, and, you know, our current accomplishments and really what we're looking at in the future in terms of challenges and the work ahead for us. So, um, I guess I'll just start by saying, you know, regardless of what has happened, um, throughout the pandemic, it's the library's mission has remained really strong, which is enrich, excite, explore. And the way we've delivered that to folks is totally different than we used to. And it's been really challenging, interesting, rewarding, frustrating, uh, to totally innovate the way we deliver library services to our community. And now that our buildings are open again, um, they're all open, uh, back to our normal hours, it's fascinating to see how patron behavior has changed, what community residents want from us, uh, what they don't want, you know, it's just, things are continuing to shift. We still don't quite, uh, know what things will look like in the future. So, you know, I'm gonna cover a little bit of that for you, give you a glimpse into some of the complexities of dealing with that. But it's truly interesting to, to see a really long-term institution try and, uh, I'm not really sure what's right where it is, because innovate, it doesn't really describe how we have to completely reimagine everything we're doing right now and in the future. So, you know, with that being said, um, I think everyone, all the county Commissioners here are fairly aware of this, but just briefly, I'll state that the way our system is run is fairly unique in that, um, there's the Benton County Library Services District, uh, and then through it, an IGA that we have between the City of Corvallis and Benton County. Those funds are turned over to the City of Corvallis to run the system. And then we have several branches, and we have, um, independent IGAs with the various incorporated cities, or in the case of Alsea nonprofit, um, for them to maintain the building, but for City of Corvallis to actually provide all the staffing, equipment, operations, materials, all of that. And for our smaller communities, like Monroe is a great example. It's a, it's a small rural community with an amazing library building. If any of you have never been to the Monroe Library, it's really worth a trip. But, uh, you know, their city pays on average between 12 and 16,000 dollars a year for utilities, um, you know, landscaping, uh, just maintenance of the building. But that's, that's what their city is paying to receive, you know, over 30 open hours of service, a really robust collection of materials, a lot of online resources. You know, this is just not the kind of library you would typically see in a community the size of Monroe and, and the rural residents, you know, outside of it who use that space. Um, so it's really advantageous for all of our communities, um, especially in the wider part of the county. And so I just, I'm really thankful we have the system set up the way we do. I think it is efficient. It doesn't duplicate, you know, our resources. And I think the way we manage our collection especially is really smart. It, it floats between all of our branches. So that means, um, you know, the folks in Monroe and Alsea and, you know, Kings Valley, they all have access to, you know, over 400,000 items, physical items, not even including our, our digital stuff. So, you know, that's a level of access that you don't typically see in smaller communities. So I'm really thankful we have, um, this set up the way that we do. Okay, it looks like I'm, are you guys able to see flies? And I'm just not seeing them, by the way?
No, um, I think that Erica gave you the presentation right.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, cool. I can handle that. All right. Can you see my presentation now?
Indeed.
Okay, great. Um, all right. So like I've already mentioned, you know, we've got this intergovernmental agreement. We also have a library advisory board. We haven't really been meeting throughout the pandemic. Uh, we're only gonna meet as necessary right now for business. And, you know, we just really haven't had anything pressing to get the group together, but that is a joint effort by the City of Corvallis and Benton County. And it's a group of folks that I really enjoy working with and feel like we have a lot of success together. Um, I've already mentioned our branch libraries. We do have a bookmobile. It's not in service right now. It's just something that we find, you know, kind of mentally challenging to wrap our minds around how we're gonna, um, have that serviced in the middle of COVID. It's a very small space, um, where a lot of people pass through. And we feel like our delivery services, which I will talk about a little bit more in a moment, really serve our community residents throughout the county in the same way that the bookmobile does. Um, granted, we aren't able to do some of the outreach we were, but a lot of those, you know, after-school programs, um, a lot of the things that we were doing aren't happening either. So right now, bookmobile is on pause, so we can funnel more efforts into our delivery services. And then, of course, we have our supporting nonprofit groups, the Friends of the Library, who often do book sales. They sell items online on Amazon. Um, they provide annually about $80,000 for programs, materials, you know, supplies, that kind of thing. We have the, um, Library Foundation Board, which, uh, really focuses more on capital level, um, fundraising and taking larger investments and estate planning, that sort of thing. And then, you know, we are, have recently developed the Monroe Library Legacy Fund Committee, which is a collaborative effort with South Benton Community Association to help support the long-term capital needs of the Monroe Library Building. And that's turned out incredibly successful, and I think it's something we'd like to try and replicate in Columbus and potentially Alsea. So some of the staff members that you need to know, myself, um, our deputy director, Andrew Chervis, and our extension supervisor, Mary Meaven. Mary covers the branches. Andrew covers the bookmobile and delivery service. And then, of course, I help oversee everything. So if you ever need anything, we're the folks to help you. But of course, at the end of the day, all of our staff really do support the branch county libraries. Um, it's a collaborative effort. And like I mentioned earlier, you know, we're really focused not on saying, you know, this is the bucket of money for Monroe. This is how much it is for Columbus. It's, we're gonna work together to make the most use of everything. So if we develop a program in Corvallis, it travels around to everyone. Um, and so I'm just, I think that that method works really well for making most use of our dollars. Okay, so, uh, like I've mentioned, we are doing delivery. I put a couple pictures in here because I think it's just kind of interesting to see, and I thought y'all might like it. So this is delivery in the very, very beginning. This is the front lobby of the Corvallis Library. And as you can see, we just had stuff from the lobby all the way to the back end of the library spread out, trying to figure out how to manage doing this. We really felt like this was our best solution for offering safe, um, library services to the community. We did introduce a lot of other things along the way before we reopened our building. You know, we always had computer lab hours. Um, we had text and go services for a long time. Uh, and so, uh, those were available in our branch libraries as well. And then, of course, delivery. So we have changed the process quite a bit. It's gotten far more efficient, uh, thankfully. And we ended up producing some really impressive numbers, I think, um, in terms of service. So currently, as of, um, last week, the total number, number of deliveries we have made, um, throughout the entire county is 105,000 and a few more. And I want to point out that that's not items. That's actual deliveries, um, to a person's residence or, um, potentially, you know, uh, some kind of assisted living home or, you know, there's like a whole variety of places we make deliveries to. So I, I think that's a pretty huge milestone, and, um, I really haven't seen another library doing delivery on this scale. So I feel pretty impressed that we were able to figure out how to make it work. Um, I did want to point out, so normally our circulation numbers are quite high when you look at our national comparators. Of course, you know, right now, they're much lower than they used to be, but I still think it's pretty impressive that since the start of the pandemic, you know, I just picked April 1st, you know, probably a little bit before that, we were closed. Uh, we still have circulated in terms of physical items, over half a million items. And then if you include digital items, it's over 800,000. So considering our buildings were not open for the last, you know, 16 months, with the exception of the last couple of months, I think that there are really impressive number of items to get into the hands of the community with a closed building. Uh, it's just, you know, if you look at Eugene or Salem, um, some of our other comparators, Albany, if you look at their numbers, um, in terms of circulation and visits and how many people they served, Corvallis typically is towards the top, if not the top. Um, I just think the way we structure things worked really well for the community, and it's what, generally speaking, the community wanted. So prior to our building reopening, uh, we were doing over 2,000 deliveries a week. Uh, currently, we're doing about 1,000. We are seeing a big number of people switch back to delivery right now. Um, and right now... And right now, the nice thing is, you know, to use library services, you don't have to pick one or the other, you can do both. You can get your items delivered to you, you can continue coming to the library in person. You know, it's, it's really easy and I think we've made it very flexible. And so people are able to do what they feel comfortable with, what they need to do right now. Maybe they're quarantining for some reason, maybe they don't feel comfortable leaving their space, maybe they're just really busy, maybe they're busy homeschooling their kids and they need resources and they feel like it's, you know, a really big challenge to get out of the house. So no matter what the reasoning, we're still offering that and we're seeing big usage of it still. Previously, our daily average number of deliveries, which we do deliveries Monday through Friday, we were doing over 400. Currently, we're doing about 200 deliveries a day. The highest number of deliveries we did, I was pretty proud about this, we did do 939 deliveries in one day. That was the day after the wildfire smoke had cleared back in 2020 when we weren't able to do deliveries for a few weeks because of the air quality. And we weren't able to offer text and go service. So I mean, it just, people really didn't have access to items for those couple of weeks, which was challenging. So we really wanted to make a huge push on that first day we could. And I'm really proud, we did almost 1,000 deliveries in one day. I think that's, that's pretty impressive. We did have staff all levels doing delivery, it's much more scaled back these days. We had vehicles from a variety of city departments, have a vehicle rented from OSU. I think just in general, the name of the game for us this past year was flexibility. Just everyone sort of had to learn a whole new job and how to deliver services and we, we figured it out. So a couple of accomplishments, like I've already mentioned, you know, just reinventing services, thinking about new ways to do things. We started offering online library cards, which means you can just get a card that's good for three months and at some point, you know, come on into one of our libraries and get that upgraded. Problem with doing online meetings in your office is your phone starts ringing. Sorry about that. And I think that online library cards has really created a new level of access for some folks and I'm really excited about, about that. We see higher levels of card registrations than we ever have before. We also started checking out Chromebooks and Wi-Fi hotspot to anyone with a library card, recognizing that a lot of folks don't feel comfortable coming into our buildings perhaps and they still need internet access or they just don't even have a computer. So we offer both of those for folks. And the Wi-Fi hotspot are unlimited data, so they don't have to worry about limiting anything, they can just go out, do that, return it, and we go from there. We did work closely with the schools in the beginning to see if they needed those kinds of services and if we could help collaborate. But as you know, you know, our local school districts really figured that out. We, we were able to see that our focus was more on, especially the older generations who maybe didn't have a device. And we also have worked with a lot of our local community partners, like the Daytime Drop-In Center to provide them Wi-Fi and computers because we recognize that the populations that we serve are kind of all over the place right now instead of coming into the library. So we're really trying to make sure we're helping all of our partners, you know, still provide what we need, what we used to and what we still would like to, to, to our community. I also just wanted to mention something I was really proud of that we, we managed to do during this and that's the elimination of late fines. So that means folks who do not return their items on time are no longer charged a late fee. We find that to be really punitive, that it's a challenging barrier for folks and that there's groups of people who will not use the library services because they fear a potential charge. Now, you know, people always have the concern that your items aren't going to come back on time, people aren't going to, they'll just keep things. You know, we do still charge for lost items or items that are never returned. And we have previous to this eliminated late fines for juvenile items. And what we saw from three years of data was eliminating juvenile fines changed people's return dates, return, yeah, dates from 17 days to 21 days. So it was a couple of days difference, but overall speaking, people's actual patterns of usage didn't really change. People who are going to return stuff on time tend to return stuff on time. You know, if you have a busy life and, you know, you're always kind of seeming to miss it by a week, you typically still miss it by a week. But, you know, really what we're focused on is eliminating barriers. I've had folks come to me and say, you know, why didn't you do some kind of subsidy program? And, you know, because this doesn't affect that many people. And what I really just want to emphasize, both now, how we made this decision and how we're looking at all of our future challenges is, you know, the difference between systemic barriers and, you know, equity versus equality. And so really when we look at this, it's like you can remove, you can give, you know, that image where everyone's sort of got a box, right? One person has one box, one person doesn't have one, one has two, so that they can all see over this fence. And so in my mind, you know, a subsidy program would mean we're giving folks those boxes so they can all see over the fence. But in order to actually remove the systemic barrier, it's like just get rid of the fence so that way everyone can see and we don't have to give out the boxes. That's really the way I look at this decision-making. It's not a huge financial impact for us at the library and it really makes a big difference for a lot of our community members. And so that's how we're looking at the challenges in front of us and how we're looking at the future. You know, we want to make decisions where we're continually increasing access to our community residents, you know, finding out why people don't use the library, why they've stopped using the library and really trying to make a concerted effort to allow them to use our services. And, you know, we've made a lot of changes like this, I won't go into all of them for the sake of time, but I'm just really proud of the, the change in the way we look at problems and problem solving. And I'm, I'm really excited about the future efforts that we're going to make as well. You know, as for our other accomplishments, it's, it's about the same from what you've heard from other organizations, I'm sure, right? Just taking things virtual, we've been doing virtual classroom visits, we still coordinate with our Reed Dogs, with OSU athletes to do different things. You know, we consistently hear great feedback from our partners. We've increased our digital offerings and, you know, overall, we've seen usage of those digital offerings increase a lot. And then obviously, we've really done a lot of virtual programming and we've really taken a focus on inclusive programming. A lot of the stuff we did last year, we tried to make sure there were DEI components related to the, you know, each of the programs that we offered. And I won't go into details, but we also started recording them and adding closed caption subtitles on them and putting them on our website so that way people could go back and watch them if they hadn't before. And I think these are the kinds of things we'll continue to do as we go forward, pandemic or not, recognizing that it increases access for folks. All right, future challenges, you know, I really think supporting our schools is the number one priority for us. I believe that, you know, we don't really know what our schools need. We don't, I don't think our schools know what they need quite yet. We're going to really have to get into this next year and see. We were, I think, a great partner this last year, but I think it's just going to take us being flexible and responsive, looking at the year ahead and really working with our educators, you know, the school's administration, school boards, and just really ensuring that if they need something, they know that the library is a great partner to go to and that we can help support the educational needs of our communities. I also do just want to briefly mention, we did get a ARPA grant from the State Library of Oregon specific to our Alsea and Monroe libraries and supporting our school districts. We received a $5,000 grant to promote, to create theme kits and literacy packages that we're going to actually give out to students in coordination with the schools. And that's going to be happening with upcoming year. And so I, I really appreciate the fact that the state library was looking at programs that were focused on serving rural residents because I do think that there's a base underserved group there. And so I'm excited that we're able to put that project out. And then, like I mentioned, just understanding new models of library use. I could go into a really big discussion about this. A really good example that's simple and easy to explain is audiobooks. So we have a lot more audiobooks on our shelves than we ever used to and that's, I think, because people used to commute a lot and would listen to audiobooks back and forth. Well, a lot of people don't need to take on their daily commute anymore. So, you know, the real question is, how is this collection going to change over time? Is there still going to be a high demand for it? Should we create more shelf space? Should we, you know, lower our collection? Should we change how much money we spend on it? It's just, imagine that time, the entire collection. We really are seeing changing use and it's hard sometimes to make decisions about what to do when you have to make a decision right now. So for example, right now, we actually have some of our audiobooks in storage, thinking that, you know, our buildings are open, people are going to kind of get back into this. But it's really hard to tell what's going to happen. Or did more people figure out how to use digital throughout the pandemic and now they're doing that versus physical, you know? So these are the kinds of things we're looking at moving forward. And kind of like I mentioned earlier, you know, trying to get a handle on what is it the community wants right now? What are they going to get accustomed to? What are they going to enjoy? What are they going to need in the future? We're still, you know, working through all that. Every day is, is something new. And of course, as I mentioned, we're still doing delivery even while we're open. And so for us, that's a real balancing act, just trying to figure out how to do both of those things successfully in a way that folks are happy with. And so that continues to be a big item for us at this exact moment as we still kind of figure out exactly how to handle that. And then last but not least, we just need to continue searching out and eliminating barriers, increasing access, what those barriers are changing every day. And so we just need to stay flexible and thoughtful and strategic in what we are doing. And so with that, I just want to thank you for your time and attention and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ashley. Pat, go ahead.
Yeah, just a comment, you mentioned the word flexible and I already have that written down, but these are challenging times and trying to, you know, a library has been changing for decades, but as far as usage, but this last year and a half has been a real challenge and congratulations to you and your staff. Well, last week you used to work inside showing books and this week you're out driving around town and, or around the county. So let the staff know, we really appreciate the flexibility in trying to figure out how to serve the community. So, and living rural, I appreciate you getting outside of Corvallis and to some of the communities scattered around the county. So thank you for, you and your staff for your efforts.
Thank you, I'll be sure to pass that along.
Ashley, it's really nice to see you again. And I'll just sort of reiterate what Pat said, I am just floored, I'm so impressed by the number of deliveries and I just, yes, please pass along our thanks and our amazement to your staff for just all the pivoting and all the crazy work. I just can't, I can't believe how awesome you guys are. So thank you. And then number two, I'll just say I am your new library board liaison. So I'm looking forward to whatever we do finally get to meet.
Awesome, thank you Nancy.
Thank you, Ashley, always a pleasure and continue to be impressed by all that you and your team can do. Awesome group of people.
Yeah, I'm so fortunate to have this position and to work with the folks that I do and we have such a supportive community. It's, it's really amazing. I, there's nothing like it, so I'm very fortunate.
Ashley, I'm the Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Coordinator for the county and I just sent you a email, I'd love to collaborate, pray a great work you're doing, I'd love to see what else we can do.
Oh, that's great, thank you.
Thanks, Johan. Okay, moving on, we next have a discussion with service providers that help people in our community that are experiencing homelessness and have complex behavioral needs. And it's not necessarily an "and," sometimes this is an "or" in terms of the services you all provide. And we have Amelia Withheys with us today from Chance, Chance Recovery, Elizabeth Abel, Hazel Wood, and guests from Pathfinder Clubhouse, Anita Earl from Samaritan Homeless Resource Team, and Kenny Go from our own Hope Department. So welcome all. We have an hour for this discussion and as we framed it, it was basically to give you the opportunity to describe to us what the mission is of your group and how you provide your services and to talk to us a little bit about how you see yourself fitting in within the Hope Advisory Board recommendations to address issues of eliminating, if not greatly reducing homelessness here in the community. So thank you all for showing up. And on my list, Amelia, you are first.
Well, hello everybody, thank you for inviting me to this conversation. So for starters, I'm kind of new at this table. I'm acting interim executive director for Chance, but my previous six months I've been running Second Chance Homeless Shelter in Albany, which used to be Science Victory Mission. And so homelessness is not a new topic, topic for me personally. It really intersects with the folks that we serve every day at Chance. And so for me, I'm just at the beginning of the talks of where we fit in with the Hope recommendations. I've reviewed the documents involved and for us, some of the things that, that I think that we, we could be involved with would be recommendation number one, facilitating coordinated data improvement efforts. So data drives the decisions that we make, right? And so if we have those numbers that tell us what the needs of the community are, then we know where to get support services to. And so that's a big one for us. Working to help create metrics for successful program goals. Also number four, collaborating with social service and healthcare partners to increase the number of paid full-time case managing out of homelessness. So we provide, our organization provides peer support for folks who are struggling with life crises. It could be anything from substance abuse disorder to mental illness, maybe fleeing domestic violence or experiencing homelessness. And so peer support and case management kind of go hand in hand. They're not quite the same thing, but they're close. And so for us, we know how important case managers are, especially with running the shelter that we have. We don't have enough people in Albany. And so at least that's what we're learning over here. And so I imagine the, the same issue has happened in, in Corvallis and Benton County. And so we'd really like to help with that. And then providing organizational capacity and coordinating providers and establish 24/7, 365 sheltering system for all populations with onsite resources at sheltered locations to transition people out of homelessness. I think that's another recommendation we could be involved with. Our role right now in Benton County and that is we help with non-congregate sheltering through our hotel, emergency hotel voucher program. And so we've definitely had some successes there, but we've also had some challenges. And I think the last year, year and a half, we can bring a lot of experience to the table moving forward on how we provide this kind of support within the system of care in a more appropriate and supportive way. Recommendation eight, explore and investigate the need and the barriers to accepting housing for individuals and their families in our community whose past history have impacted their ability to secure housing. So that is something that we have helped folks with throughout our history as an organization, not only finding employment opportunities, but really figuring out how to move beyond our past experiences to... our past experiences to change how we're viewed in our community. Everyone at Chance has their own story of recovery from one thing or multiple things. And so, my own experience in that is, I'm the first woman in recovery from substances. And so, I had to learn how to, I can't change the past, but I can, I can do different things moving forward. And so, how do I show that to my community that I've taken accountability for my choices in the past? I've done what I can to remedy that, and moving forward. But that's not who I am today, and so, we really get to share those experiences with our community members and teach them how to transcend these past choices that are holding them back from housing and employment and all kinds of stuff. And so, those are some of the areas that we see that we could be helpful with, and that we're always open to help with other things, but if somewhere else we can fit in. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Sure. Amelia, can you tell us a little bit more about the structure of Chance and how big you are these days, and what proportion of your peer mentors are volunteers versus paid? Or just, how do you operate?
Absolutely. So, we currently have, well, technically, six locations. Right now, our Lincoln City office is not up and running. We are having a hard time keeping peer support there because of housing issues and that sort of thing. And so, we have a center in Lebanon. We have our headquarters in Albany, in downtown Albany. We have Second Chance Shelter across the street from the Lake County Jail. We have an office in Benton County, and an office in Newport, and right now, an empty building in Lincoln City. So, all of our peer support is paid positions here. In the past, we've had some volunteer peer support done through like community groups, like things like anger management classes, and arts and crafts classes, and life skills kind of classes around budgeting and all kinds of things like that. But currently, all of our peer support staff is paid. And so, we, as an organization, are transitioning. We've had a lot of growth in the last couple of years, and so, we're going from a model where our organizational structure has an executive director, to we have an executive team now that carry out some of these roles, and then we have management staff for each location that is supported by our executive team. Did I hit all your questions?
I think so. Can you tell me how many staff you have now?
Twenty-three.
Okay. Yeah, when I first met with Blackstone about five years ago, we know it was much smaller. So, I really appreciate that the role of Chance plays in the community, providing peer support, and I hope that you guys will continue to do that for many, many years to come, such a valuable role. So, and please don't hesitate to reach out and let us know how we can help you, because you are definitely a part of what it will mean to be successful with all of this work. And we want to be able to continue to count on you as part of the team, all of you at Chance.
Thank you very much.
I'm glad you gave me a little background. I had the same kind of question as Ann. So, you operate in three counties, and is that a coincidence that it's the same three counties that are Cog people operating, or is there some connection there?
So, our overarching goal for the last four or five years was to have a Chance drop-in center wherever there was a Samaritan hospital, so that we could provide support services for folks who are experiencing these crises, from individuals who have lived experience.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're very fortunate that we have the same tri-county structure for so many of our services. It helps us degrade those services much more effectively. So, thanks to Samaritan and IHNPO. Are there other questions for Amelia at this time? I would like to ask you, can you tell me about the status of the Hotel Motel Doctor Program and just how robust that is right now, or has it really waned?
Sure. So, I don't have the exact numbers right in front of me, because I'd have to switch screens, but we've been on a little bit of a hold for putting new people in, just because some of our current funding ended, and so, the people that we do have in there, we didn't want to have to kick out, so we just kind of, we're working on, we do have new funding coming now, we just don't have all the details, and so, we're just figuring out right now, based on how many people are in there, how much it's going to cost to keep them in there till the end of the funding, so we know how many more people we can put in. That way, we don't have to, right in the middle of winter, kick everybody out, really. And so, that's something that we should know in the next week, probably a week and a half, if we can start adding more people. But if you give me a minute, I can look up how many people we have over in Corvallis right now.
Thank you. And I know that our Hope Department and Samaritan, Anita and her team work with you pretty closely. So, we always want to know what that pipeline looks like, and whether more support would be helpful as we move into winter.
Yeah, I think we'll have a better idea sometime in the next week and a half, what our needs are going to look like, based on how many more folks we could put in.
Thank you. Okay. I am, the next on my list is Pathfinder Clubhouse. If there are no other questions for Amelia at Chance at this time? Elizabeth?
Thank you. And Teresa, are you going to be able to share our presentation, or shall we just talk a little bit?
This is Erica. Do you have, are you able to share your screen? I don't believe I have access to your presentation.
I, yeah, I, it says I need to ask for permission.
Sure, just a moment here.
I just need to be made presenter, it says.
Perfect. Okay, that should be coming over to you momentarily.
Perfect. Yep. Perfect. Okay. So, hello, everybody. I'm Elizabeth Hazelwood. I'm the executive director of Pathfinder Clubhouse. And so, Pathfinder Clubhouse is located downtown in Corvallis, right at the corner of Van Buren. First, here's a picture of our building.
Where is the club house?
First and foremost, the Clubhouse is a group of people that are living with mental illness that choose to better their lives every single day. The best way to describe what a Clubhouse does is if you think about all that really important clinical work, we don't do any of that. We pick up where they stop. So, we help with housing, employment, socialization, life skills, health and wellness.
According to the Oregon Health Assessment of 2019, Oregon has the highest prevalence of mental illness in the nation, and Oregon ranks 49th out of 51 states in outcomes. We have gone up since this slide has been made. We are now 48th, and an estimated one in five adults is currently living with a mental health diagnosis. And according to the CDC study, suicide rates in Oregon have risen by over 28%. And the Oregon Community Health Assessment projects suicide rates could increase in Oregon by, sorry, 35% by 2025. And this is before, this is before COVID.
So, Pathfinder Clubhouse really looks at and believes that recovery from mental illness is more than possible. People can thrive, living full and meaningful lives. We help our members empower, we help people, adults work through their mental illness by providing non-clinical mental health services that address barriers to employment, socialization, wellness, transportation, education, self-sufficiency, housing, and financial stability. And we serve.
Live, live, live.
And although we are a new model here in Corvallis, we have been around for a very long time. Clubhouse International is an evidence-based model. It's been around since the 1940s. We have over 300 clubhouses around the world. Forty-two percent of our folks are actually employed, and here's a fun map of where all the clubhouses are. And it's a really great opportunity to really help people. We are also the only mental health organization that has ever been awarded the Conrad and Hilton Humanitarian Prize. It typically goes to doctors of disorders and things like that.
And yielding evidence that it's not a protocol mental health agency, you're connected on the dial. Pathfinder Clubhouse gains lives.
Clubhouses in Oregon have been proven to reduce hospitalization rates by 96%. This research was done in partnership with the Fontana Road Regional Medical Center Behavioral Health Unit, and this was based on hospital utilization prior to membership for our members, and then a year post.
Pathfinder Clubhouse works in partnership with critical providers to provide critical and duplicated services.
And so, we provide direct services for employment, housing, wellness, education, socialization, and life skills. And we've officially celebrated our first anniversary, so here is a look at what we've done so far.
Total membership is at 64 members, daily attendance at 11, members attending housing 8%, total member visits 15, cases, 711, employment obtained 11. Pathfinder Clubhouse empowers people to take back their own lives. Pathfinder Clubhouse addresses all social detriments of health in a holistic, strength-based approach.
We also really look at building self-sufficiency, so we work on building skills around budgeting, saving for deposits, cooking healthy meals, filling out applications, paying bills, and keeping track of appointments.
My name is Chuck Dalman. Here's my story. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. I was very isolated during the first several months of COVID. I wanted to avoid COVID, but at the same time, the extreme isolation led to my hospitalization over Christmas of 2020. I was released from the hospital on January 1st. I tried my best to stay healthy. I stayed on medications, but became ill and then was hospitalized again in early March of 2021. I heard about Pathfinder Clubhouse, and during this time, I started thinking about visiting a Pathfinder Clubhouse, see what it was like. Two days after I was released from the hospital, I took a tour of Pathfinder Clubhouse. The next week, I was scheduled for orientation. I was not sure what to expect. I looked forward to it because I was so tired of being isolated for so long. I felt welcome, respected, and hoped, and decided to become member number 40. What I have found at Pathfinder Clubhouse is other people with similar struggles, as we prepare meals together, eat together, clean dishes together, as well as learn about the business aspects of Pathfinder Clubhouse and possible job opportunities. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to share my story.
Members and staff work side by side, learning valuable transferable employable skills. Pathfinder Clubhouse provides our members the hands-on skills to secure employment, stable housing, and financial security while overcoming barriers and building independence and self-sufficiency. We really focus on meeting each individual where they're at and identifying the things that they would like to do, such as securing housing. We offer three different levels of employment based on the individual's choice and needs. Here's a look at our Clubhouse. As you can see here, we have a lot of different things going on, and giving the opportunity for each person, although living with a mental illness, to be a place where they're wanted and needed and expected, where they can come every single day, and be an intentional opportunity to build employable, transferable skills through side-by-side work. Everything is equal here, and everything is decided by choice and voluntary. Also, people living with mental illness tend to die on average 25 years younger than people living without mental illness. We just simply find that unacceptable. So, we look at health and wellness as something that needs to be integrated into everything we do. We have two wellness activities every day, from yoga to meditation to working out. We also look at food as medicine. How do we integrate and make sure that we take as much from Whole Foods, preferably garden to tables, while also helping our members learn how to utilize it, how to source, how to inventory, how to go to the farmer's market and shop, because we do that as a group every Wednesday? Also, how to double your food stamps while you're there. And then, if our members are ready, they can use these skills to continue on and possibly find a job.
Pathfinder Clubhouse, we seek parts of solution solving, here just how house prices that are continued basis.
We try to intentionally keep the referral process as low barrier as possible. Our community providers fill out a short one-page referral and send that in to us via secure email or fax. The referral is followed up on by a tour to make sure that each individual gets the opportunity to choose to be a part of our program. Then, once the person's referred, they complete a one-day orientation, and they are members. Then, people get to choose what they would like.
Clubhouse in Corvallis helps to reduce recidivism, hospitalization, improve employment and housing rates, saving the community greatly in preventative health care costs.
This is just a fun little slide, because we were awarded a matching grant from Collins And that is all we've got, so I'm going to stop sharing and answer, then I do want to... I apparently, I'm going to not stop sharing my screen.
It's somewhere at the bottom of the screen, right? Do you find the button?
Does that do it?
Yes.
Okay, good. I also want to talk a little bit about, we have been participating in the partner meetings monthly, so we're pretty up to date on what the Hope recommendations are. One of the things is, we fit into a different kind of gap, because we get to kind of jump in where each individual needs us. So, we get the opportunity to take people to look at how we help work with other agencies to secure rental assistance. We also look at kind of the underlying root causes of what caused people to come on house, because if you have no income, how are you able to secure housing? So, is it that you need help applying for social security disability? Is it that you need help finding a job? Is it that you need to get some A and D services? What is it that each individual needs, and how can we partner with people? That way, we don't duplicate work, and we make sure that each one of our individuals kind of gets the support that they really need. And then, one of the things that we are happy about is that we have helped 8% of our population this year secure housing, and then, over 50%, I mean, over 50 of our members also maintain and secure housing. And there, Mr. O.
I think the benefits of Pathfinder Clubhouse being non, first of all, a non-profit, and this notification is crucial because it's a key component to the long-term success of people with mental illness. It saves a lot of money.
And it saves a lot of money as far as hospitalizations.
So what questions can we ask?
Probably saved a lot of money and a lot of stress to avoiding hospitalizations.
Even the best hospitals, if we can avoid the hospitalization, that is by far the best outcome for everybody. Individuals, community, alike.
Yep. Thank you, Elizabeth, and thank you also to Chuck. I really appreciate your story and appreciate the work that Pathfinder Clubhouse is doing in the community. You really do build the role of passion in between things, and it's a great model. So I'm grateful to hear that you're up to 64 members and hopefully will be able to flourish, even in this COVID time. So, thanks much. Questions for Elizabeth and Chuck?
Elizabeth, you mentioned coordination between different providers. Would you fill that in a little bit for me?
Absolutely. So we do partner really closely. We are part of the Community Discharge Plan for Good Samaritan Inpatient Hospitals. And it's moving into the pilot stage hopefully this next year, where we get a chance to go meet people while they're still hospitalized and are planning to be discharged. So that way, we can really kind of come together. People have done so much work in the hospital to get stabilized. We make sure that they get to the clubhouse within 48 hours of discharge. That way, they get a chance to get those supports immediately. We also work very closely with Benton County Mental Health. Chance has been an amazing, especially with the hotel vouchers, being able to, you know, Friday afternoon at 3:00, we had a mother and a minor child walk in, and they had lost their housing. And she was terrified about sleeping with her daughter on the streets, and I was concerned. So I actually reached directly out to Julie Arena, who put out an SOS. And Chance, within an hour, got back, and we got them, they didn't have to sleep on the streets one single night. And those things are so important. Anita Earl works with our folks a lot. We get a, you know, that's the beauty of having this community. And having the partner meetings like that the Hope Board does has been so beneficial to that, because we then get a chance to know what's happening with other organizations. And that way, we can really not duplicate the work and reach out and support people where we can.
Great, thank you. I'm a big fan of partnerships and coordination, and so this sounds like a great, great model. So thank you for the filling in, laying information for me.
Absolutely.
And I'll point out that the monthly partners call that Julie Arena facilitates was an outgrowth of the initial COVID shutdown. And what happened was that initially, there were weekly calls among all the providers, because everyone was scrambling for information and trying to not leave anyone out in the cold and give it as rapidly as possible. So that monthly call, I think it's been, as you mentioned, become invaluable to be able to coordinate. Even a little bit of case management here is a good example of providing that on the line. But it's been very, very helpful. Are there any other questions for the Pathfinder team at this time? Okay, thank you, and thank you so much for what you do in the community. One question. Members from Lincoln County, how do they access services given the distance?
So that is one of the challenges that has, we have been trying to work outside the box to kind of, to get people here. Obviously, transportation, medical transport is incredibly expensive. So one of the things that we've been working on doing is we've been helping some of our folks that do come from Lincoln County take the shuttle. It is not ideal, it is not fast, but it is, it is a way to get here. But then also piggybacking off of other medical appointments. So if someone is coming here for a medical appointment, having them go ahead and do a three-point. So after their medical appointment or before, they come to the clubhouse, they get a chance to interact, and then also save a good deal of money in that transportation piece. Some of the things that we've been talking about with our providers that we're partnering with in Lincoln County is looking at how do we, do we possibly talk about picking and doing a shuttle of some sort for combined services? So where providers get an opportunity to just do a very targeted van rag in the morning. In fact, our long-term goal is to also have a clubhouse out there at some point, so that way it's not so much travel. We ended up in Benton County because it was in the middle between Lynn and Lincoln. But we also recognize that transportation, especially from the coast, is incredibly hard. We're actually talking with specifically the Office of Self-Sufficiency on how do we best help that, especially for some of their folks that are parents that really need our services. So we, it is still a work in progress. I would love to see a direct, like, medical transport route at some point that maybe went back and forth. But that, you know, those are all things to think about as we grow.
Excellent, thank you. To the Council of Government colleagues who are no longer on the line to hear that, the interest in that direct medical transportation route, but I'm sure we can all communicate that. So thanks for that. And I know that rural, rural, rural Lincoln County must also be a challenge. Okay, appreciate everything you're doing. Thank you. We will move on then to Anita Earl with Samaritan Homeless Resource Team.
Good morning, everybody. I certainly will second that Benton, Lynn, Lincoln Counties, what wonderful community partnerships. I'm forever appreciative of those. So I work for the Samaritan Healthcare System in a program that is called the Care Hub. And the aim of this program is to provide homeless outreach, to manage discharges from the hospital with patients who are unhoused and extremely fragile. So we have a growing medical respite program that is tri-county. And then also to offer social work support and nursing support out in our communities for a variety of folks housed and unhoused who are really struggling with mental health substance abuse or social determinant of health concerns. The uniqueness of the program is twofold. We're a program that has, as I said, licensed clinical social workers and nurses, and these nurses are trained in a variety of fronts. So we have stroke experts, we have diabetes educators, we have cardiac heart failure experts, we have medical equipment like blood pressure cups, walkers, scales. We have access, of course, to the Samaritan Medical Record. And so with our patients, like say I get a call from Amelia, which is not uncommon, saying she's got someone at the shelter who seems to be really struggling, and perhaps they're incontinent, and she's just not sure that the medication's on point, and they have a Samaritan provider, and they said it's okay to talk to me. So I'll show up at the shelter with the nurse. The nurse will look at the medication, talk to the primary care provider, arrange the medication and a pill counter. If there's durable medical equipment that's needed, I can supply it. If they need to get on HUD, we need perhaps to advocate for them with community microshelters. The social worker will do all that, and all of our social workers are trained in trauma debriefing. So this is really what I hope is cutting-edge trauma-informed care. So at the minimum, people are getting emotional support where they are. And at the maximum, we're advocating utilizing community resources. But really, our sweet spot is helping people navigate the healthcare system. They don't have transportation, I'll arrange it. They need their medication delivered and a nurse to explain it, we will make that happen. They sort of understand their diabetes, but not really. A diabetes educator will go out to their shelter, or their car, or their tent, or their camp. We go everywhere, and our entire staff is clinical, so we're providing that clinical support. If I get called by Safe Camp saying that somebody's got a wound and they're pretty concerned, and they're refusing to go to the ED or urgent care, I can show up at a tent with a nurse, and we can take a look and see what we think, and the nurse can advise whether this is urgent care or the ED. And then I can call. I can meet them in the emergency department to ensure that there's a continuity piece, to ensure that they're transported back to their shelter, and the nurse checks on them in four and five days just to see the infection and spread. So we respond in a variety of different ways to people in all three counties, housed and unhoused. I mean, we have a lot of really marginalized folks in East Lynn County who are very poverty-stricken, sometimes in houses that don't have running water. We respond to those calls too. We respond to specific communities if someone's living on the beach and they're struggling. So the uniqueness is our ability to outreach out in the community anywhere and almost any time with clinical staff providing assessment. I suppose that's the depth and the breadth of it. And as Van mentioned, we have a homeless resource team that coordinates within our little niche in the system. But we are also part of expanding efforts in Lynn County, where we're going to have five new medical respite beds soon, hopefully. Woohoo! And in Newport North Lincoln, we are, we've got three beds, and we're hoping to get more in. Those medical respite beds are for folks who are unhoused, who have had an acute injury or in a catastrophic phase of treatment. Think chemotherapy, think amputation. And they certainly are not appropriate for acute care facilities. There's no way they're going to make it out there with a room and board, you know, with shelter from the elements and access to rooms.
We lost your audio, Anita.
Oh, I lead those medical respite efforts. I think that's probably the down and dirty, but I'm happy to answer any specific questions.
I have a couple of specific questions, as I did for Amelia. How big is the Care Hub team? And in terms of the mobile, are you, what are you operating out of, and do you have more than one?
Well, we are a team of about 15 and growing exponentially, because we've been pretty successful in wrapping our services and our love around people. The outreach team for the unhoused, specifically the social work team, is much smaller. It's three to four people. The nursing team is a little bit more robust, and we also have traditional health or community healthcare workers who sometimes accompany folks to medical appointments to advocate and just to make sure that the trauma that experience doesn't overwhelm and cause them not to show up. We all operate out of Samaritan Administrative Building. That's where our offices, we all are there. And then we go out in our own private cars to respond to various efforts, you know, or patient concerns or crises at any hospital in our system and in various locations.
Okay, so in that case, you also have to work really closely with others to provide medical transport, since you guys don't have that capacity?
Most people who are really low in terms of Maslow's hierarchy have got OHP or IHN, and many of them have ride lines, so we activate their ride line. But I also have some charitable funds from the Samaritan Foundation that I use to pay for medical transporter taxi cabs for people if I need to transport them. We don't transport anyone in our own vehicle, but I can, I can leverage various community partners to make that work.
Okay. And do you also collaborate with the Samaritan Medical Van when it goes out?
We don't per se, but we are part of Samaritan Medical Van Support Team, and we were very instrumental in advocating for them being at the drop-in center in the men's winter shelter. And so we try and have social workers there those days too to support follow-up. And if the practitioner at the medical van notes something that she's concerned about, they can give us a little shout-out or message us, and then we respond with follow-up at the shelter.
Thank you. Are there other questions for Anita?
Know about our team, and we're pretty much daily, I would say, contact.
Thanks. Sorry, there's a little bit of malag every once in a while in your audio feed. The other question, so it sounds like you are totally plugged in with all of the other local service providers. They know to contact you. I know everyone has your number on speed dial. As we move forward with the Hope Recommissions, what is your biggest aspirations in terms of near-term and long-term accomplishments?
Oh, gosh, I have lots of hopes and dreams, so aspirations, ah, yah, yah. We definitely, we would assume and hope to be a primary player in the hub model. You know, if we do get a brick and mortar at some time, I will certainly have a staff person there to work with community partners onsite. We are having our social work staff at Corvallis Housing First a couple of days a week, at the Drop-In Center a day a week, and I think we'll probably have send folks over to Safe Camp a day a week. So we're trying to have our, disperse our team into the various community-based organizations onsite, because so many of these things, these crises, happen in the moment, and you need to respond, right? So we would participate, of course, on the team. I would definitely love to partner in terms of a brick and mortar. And other than that, I don't know, dot, dot, dot. Always willing, always interested, so.
Okay. And the other thing that you mentioned was that you can almost respond 24/7. Are your official hours 9 to 5, or?
We are pretty much at 7 to 7 o'clock-ish, five days a week. And as you mentioned, some people do have my private cell. So if there's a wacky call on the weekend and something is really sideways, I'll respond. But we don't have, we're not staff on the weekend. Maybe Sunday.
Sure, appreciated, Anita. And I'm grateful that Samaritan and IHN CCO have seen fit to support it and hope that that support continues and grows, because that's the one that we're hoping to do. Okay. Any other questions for Anita? Thank you. So Kenny, Benton County Mental Health and Housing.
Yeah, thank you. Can you guys hear me okay? All right. So when I discuss housing services with Benton County Mental Health, usually I like to describe it in terms of three separate parts. So one element of our work here is overseeing residential services. So within Benton County, we have two adult foster homes, two residential treatment homes, and one residential treatment facility. So that totals 30 beds within our county. And the population that we serve through that system are people that have reached that level of care or that acuity where their mental illness has been so severe, where they may be been hospitalized. Folks need some type of support or help managing their illness up to 24 hours a day with some of those facilities and group homes. So one element of housing services within Benton County includes the referral and the transition of folks in that level of care. That is state-licensed homes, they're staffed, or in the case of adult foster homes, the owner or the residential manager lives in the home with the individuals, really supporting the needs of that population. Again, severe and persistent mental ill population, folks that need supports up to 24 hours a day. The next part of services that I kind of discuss are, Benton County has rental assistance programs that we oversee in almost 40 spots in terms of rental assistance. Excuse me. Thirty-four rental assistance spots broken up into two different programs. One is specific to folks that have criminal history barriers in accessing housing. And the other program is just the general rental assistance program, again, targeting the severe and persistent mental ill population. And then we have a smaller program, five spots, for people that are, have received the highest designation, the Choice Model designation, where they've been maybe referred in and out of the state hospital, in and out of residential homes, so some of our more complex care clients. So these spots are, again, totaling 39, so almost 40 spots, where we provide direct support in case management, life skills training, supporting people, and financial assistance to help them afford housing in Benton County. Again, we're talking mostly of our population's disability income, social security, supplemental security income. Many of our clients, majority of our clients, living in what we'd consider extremely low income or living in poverty. So again, SPMI, severe persistent mental ill population. Many of our spots, people don't have to be enrolled in services, although with that type of diagnosis to qualify, we'd like to, if they need the supports and additional services of an outpatient clinician or our assertive community treatment program, we try to get those folks enrolled and engaged. in services, many of which are already enrolled in mental health services in Benton County. So, then, the third part that I describe when I talk about housing services at Benton County is providing general housing support and case management to people that are enrolled in services and touching Benton County in whatever capacity in terms of our mental health programs. So, that could be folks that are enrolled in outpatient therapy, we focus that we see in crisis, it could be folks in our drug treatment program. So, just whatever capacity, if there's a housing need, our team of housing specialists try to help support the needs of that individual, perhaps a family, with the expansion of some of our youth programs. And really support the housing case management, specific needs, in a holistic way. Approaching housing, again, the philosophy that I try to help train people with internally and externally is, housing is a symptom of much larger dysfunction, so housing can be a symptom, more often is a symptom of some type of poverty. So, I try to help, in a holistic manner, address the barriers that have led to the episode of homelessness and keep the staff and support the staff within whatever program that they may be working with, help them support the individuals that they're serving. And I think included in the packet showed, just last quarter, Benton County served almost 1,000 people throughout all different services, Benton County Mental Health, I think it was 966 individuals touched with services. And, again, the vast majority, if you just look at, you know, Medicaid eligible clients alone, the vast majority of those folks are folks experiencing poverty, experiencing very low income. And so, just being able to help support and navigate our housing affordability and availability issues that come up with, pretty often with our population. Within all of, within all of the services that we provide, there is some collaboration and working alongside the Hope Recommendations. One thing that I would like to highlight for this group is, within our rental assistance programs, there was that 12-spot program specific to people with criminal history barriers. So, one thing that I've seen just within my time in the community is a challenging population to serve and how stable they can be, our sex offender population. So, with many federal housing programs, that population is excluded from services. With our law enforcement rental assistance program, we haven't made that exclusion or that criteria. We haven't matched the Section 8 housing program. So, we've had some success with the population that meets criteria because of severe and persistent mental illness. We've had success housing and keeping them safely housed, many sex offenders that have come through that program. The discharge for that program typically is connecting people to ongoing subsidies, whether it's Section 8 or project-based sectionings or site-based Section 8 housing, where they have a permanent rental assistance. That isn't an option for discharge with that population, so we do have to be more creative in trying to establish self-sufficiency paths, whether that's increasing income so they're no longer in need of the rental assistance, or, you know, social supports, where then they now have a household or family members that can help contribute to share the housing cost burden that we see here in our community. So, that's kind of what I had prepared to kind of discuss, and I'm available to help answer any questions if you guys have them.
Thank you, Kenny. I appreciated the data that you put together to share with us, and it is very eye-opening to see that the population that you serve is from everywhere in the county and beyond the county, and that touches, you know, all ethnicities and races. And it pretty much reflects the demographics of the population as a whole. Mental health diagnoses are, don't leave anyone out. And so, appreciate the work that you're doing. And if you had a magic wand, what would you do to help our situation right now? What's your biggest hope?
That's a tough question for me to answer, because I am a systems thinker and I think very broadly in a big, big way. I just see so many touchpoints in onboarding that helps contribute to the problem, right? So, I think of housing and homelessness as a symptom of poverty. And so, maintaining that focus on addressing community-wide poverty, whether that be a scarcity of financial resources or the skills and ability to obtain, gain full employment, the skills and ability to maintain your housing. The scarcity and however you want to define it is a big piece that I see as kind of overall the community. So, one piece that I always talk about here in our local Corvallis community is we highlight our education, you know, as a strength of our youth, since we highlight 89% graduation rates. So, I like to put that in perspective for people and think about the 11% that aren't graduating and what life amounts, what their life can amount to in our community. And when we, you know, when we look at percentages, that's one thing. So, if we have 450 people successfully graduate, there's usually around 40 that don't. And how are we helping equip and ensure that those young folks are not falling into the cracks of our society? So, that, you know, I see that as one on point to where people aren't educated with the tools needed to be self-sufficient in our community. And then, just, you know, another thing that I shared with my supervisor was, I really view, you know, poverty as both cause and consequence of homelessness, and the trauma in being, is inexplicably connected with experiencing homelessness. So, just overall, how do we address the trauma, the poverty within our community to help stem the flow of people finding themselves in need of supports and services is kind of where my mind lands. But yeah, it's big, big picture, definitely difficult, challenging circumstances, but kind of how I think about the challenges ahead.
Thank you. Pat, Nancy, questions for Kenny? Okay. I have one more question. As given that Julie Arenas' role within the county is relatively new, she's sitting here for a year and a half, little over that now, have you had much opportunity to work with her on some of these issues?
We actually haven't worked directly together as much as one would think when she onboarded as the Hope Coordinator. I think there was, in that onboarding process and my position being kind of ascended to leading and working out of class, managing housing services, there was a separation that was kind of intentionally created from housing and homeless, housing and homelessness, I should say. So, my understanding was kind of steering her in the direction of addressing some of the homelessness issues and concerns, and then that kind of redirected some of my work more towards the housing piece, like the residential services and rental assistance programs, which, you know, obviously there's overlap. But yeah, directly working together, it wouldn't be as much, we haven't done that as much as one would think, given our position.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that there's a lot of opportunity to rethink as the Hope Recommendations move forward and make sure that we don't mirror some of those gaps in our own ranks that sometimes occur out in the community. But greatly appreciate all you do to help keep people safely housed and then connected to services. Very important. Okay. Are there any other questions for this panel that shared with us today?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say thank you very much to everybody who came. That was really good information, a lot of it I did not know, so thank you very much.
Excellent. I am grateful that you all were able to make it today. This is, I think, the third panel that we've had now, bringing people in from around the community and county to address what they do to help support people that are unhoused or at risk of becoming unhoused. And I think that it's going to be very helpful as we move forward with the city of Corvallis and putting together programs or addressing the gaps in the system to keep people out of this kind of poverty and from experiencing the traumas that keep people in poverty, as Kenny put it. So, thank you. Much appreciated. Look forward to working with you both. Okay. We are now moving on to item 4.4, our update from Suzanne Hoffman and April Holland from the Department of Operations. We have time for a quick break first. Yes, we do have time for a quick break. Let's take a five-minute break and be back to begin that presentation at 11:00. Thank you.
... She wins on all instances. She's off. She weighs twice. So those were really... Is that right? Because I'm glad for that. Proceed, I have a statement to make. I'm sure. Do you want to say it now? Come on, let me know.
Okay, let's resume. Next up on the agenda are April and Suzanne.
Good morning. As you know, normally, we bring you an update on the first and third weeks of the month, but that puts us all the way out to September 7th, and we thought with a rapidly changing situation, maybe an update a little sooner would be a good idea. And since you agreed here, here we are. We can bring you some more recent numbers that obviously are changing pretty significantly on a daily basis. We won't be repeating anything that we previously presented, but obviously will respond to any questions you have that might harken back to that information. And then we also had an opportunity to meet with our partners at Samaritan, specifically Good Sam, CEO Laura Henham, to just talk about the partnership and responsibility that we have from a public health emergency preparedness perspective in terms of ensuring that we understand what they have in place to handle the current surge of cases that are requiring hospitalization and how that affects their capacity and therefore our community, as well as what we'll do on an ongoing basis to stay in touch on that matter. So I think with that backdrop, I'll turn it over to April. Oops, April, I can't hear you. It looks like you are not muted, but kind of the same issue we had yesterday. So I don't know how you magically fixed it, but it's the same thing. Nope, not yet. Now you're muted. Still can't hear you.
Okay, how about now?
Got you now. You're good.
Oh, good. I unclicked the headset and clicked it again, and it worked. So that's the extent of my IT expertise. Just want to cover a few topics for you today in this brief update. Update on cases, the hospital capacity crisis that's ongoing in Oregon, and recent vaccination news. So here in Benton County, our cases do continue to increase. Last week, there were 162 confirmed and presumptive cases among residents here. That's a 12.5% increase from the previous week and the seventh week of continued increase in cases. So now we have a seven-day case rate, as we've talked about last week. That rate is 171 per 100,000. And if you still are used to thinking in the 14-day rate terms, that rate would be 323 per 100,000. So a lot of community transmission happening in Benton County and, of course, much more beyond across Oregon and the U.S. Our positivity rate is higher than we would like it to be, at 6.2%, but it's much lower than the current statewide positivity rate of 11.7%. If we look a little bit into the details of our cases, in the last month, children under 12 comprised about 9.5% of cases, and they constitute about 9.7% of the population. So they're not especially overrepresented as a proportion of all cases at this point. Adults 18 to 29 are about 30% of our population, and they're about 35% of the cases right now. It makes sense because vaccination rates in 18 to 29 is a little lower than the older age categories, and these are people who are working age, who are out and about in the community. And then our older age groups are not heavily impacted at this time. We have a 99% vaccination rate in our 75 and up age range and very few cases in that age range, and 94% vaccination rate in the 65 to 74 age range. So that's what things are looking like in terms of the ages. Our communicable disease team has been working very hard to respond to the surge in cases. When, you know, 30 or 40 cases are coming in every day, they must prioritize cases. They focus the expanded investigations on older and younger individuals and those who live, work, learn, or play in prioritized settings such as residential facilities, medical settings, and schools. And we have many current outbreaks in those prioritized settings right now. Looking at the...I'm going to switch gears to the hospital capacity piece and how things are looking there. COVID hospitalizations continue to rise across the state as they have for some time. I sort of was riding over my numbers from last week, and I entered 937 hospitalizations across the state yesterday. A week ago, it was 752. Going on down to ICUs, went from 206 to 253. So one thing to keep in mind is as we see continued increases in case numbers, a couple weeks later, we're going to see those hospitalizations catch up as they are a lagging indicator. And those hospitalizations are expected to increase, at least for the next few weeks, which is going to continue to place incredible demands on our hospital systems. In Benton County, Good Samaritan, our regional medical center continues to have higher numbers of hospitalized patients than at any point of the pandemic. The highest number had been 16 hospitalized patients in the hospital. They surpassed that number in the past few weeks and recently reached 28 people, people, community members who live among us, who were hospitalized last week. There was some relief seen over the weekend, and the latest numbers indicate a hospitalization of around 20 individuals. Have you heard last week that there are many, many things in motion to relieve the hospital systems? The state, of course, has activated an incident management team to work on things such as the significant discharge issues, staffing challenges, and just critical need to strengthen the system-wide capacity for COVID patients. Locally, our impact is less than some other hospitals, so requests may not be prioritized in order to serve those at higher need. However, there have been certain requests, including asking for additional out-of-area contracted nursing assistance. I know that there are pieces in motion to increase capacity and staffing at long-term care facilities in order to relieve that bottleneck in discharge. In public health, we're working closely with Samaritan Health Services to understand at what level of surge the facility is at and whether those thresholds for additional actions are drawing near. We had a meeting with Samaritan yesterday, and they have a comprehensive plan to expand capacity as needed. There are so many pieces to this, but they can expand their emergency department, they can expand the inpatient areas, they can expand the ICUs. Of course, there are so many nuances and complexities to all of this, given the shortage in staffing that is being seen right now. However, at this point, public health and Samaritan are in really close contact. They are the ones who know how close they are to those thresholds to need to expand further, and we are helping in getting the message out to help relieve the emergency departments by doing some simple and creative things, like directing patients, encouraging them to go to urgent care facilities instead of to the emergency department. Those small actions will really help. Samaritan has an urgent care and a walk-in clinic, and we also have the Corvallis Clinic Urgent Care, which is next to the hospital. We are really working on getting the word out on that, and the emergency department has seen a little bit of relief this weekend as well. You know, overall, this is a new type of emergency response. You know, we're used to in public health having a plan for emergencies, but the protracted nature of this one, coupled with the fact that so many areas are hard hit well beyond the borders of our state, and the fact that an incident management team is prioritizing resources, makes this one really unique and especially challenging. But we are...we have a lot of current planning efforts underway, including working with our emergency managers and regional partners on things such as navigating EMS transport challenges, fatality management in the case of limited capacity, and creative thinking to reduce the burden on hospitals. So as we move along, we will keep you informed. Just going to move along to vaccination. A lot is happening in the vaccination world right now, right at the same time as we're seeing so many other things also happening. I just want to bring a little clarity to that if I can. So on the 13th of August, CDC and then OHA followed the next Monday on the 16th with updated guidance on providing a third dose of mRNA vaccine for moderately to severely immunocompromised persons. So that's the third dose for immunocompromised. And then on the 18th of August, CDC announced a plan to offer booster shots of the mRNA vaccines, starting on the 20th of September, and at the eight-month point passed a person's second dose. So details of that are still to come. Some questions I've been getting a lot are whether boosters and third shots are the same dose of the original vaccination series. And the answer is yes. There's no difference in content, concentration, or amount for those either third dose in the series or the booster shots. And the other question that comes in a lot is around Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine boosters. Data should be released soon to determine whether that need and what that timeline is for boosters around J&amp;J. We also learned in the last week that educators will be required to be vaccinated and that healthcare workers now no longer have the option to test weekly and load a vaccination. And here at the county level, our work in vaccination continues as well. There are several vaccination events either occurring or in planning right now. Today and tomorrow, at Linus Pauling Middle School, from 2:00 to 7:00, we are helping to support a back-to-school event, which includes COVID vaccination. We'll have $100 gift cards and food boxes for everyone who's vaccinated. We have 10 events in late September and October at high schools around the county, at Philomis, Alcee, Corvallis High School, Crescent Valley High School, and Monroe, all at those high school sites. Planning also continues as we move closer to approval for children under 12, encouraging providers to make plans now to accommodate vaccination of patients or holding clinics. We also really want to and need to use existing infrastructure as much as possible, so those pharmacies and providers will be key. Benton County will continue to focus on underserved populations. We continue to provide vaccination opportunities for houseless people, for patients at the community health centers. We are...something new and exciting is with the new census data that has recently been released, we can now use that census data to employ mapping to focus on specific areas for outreach and education. And then just broadly, we'll continue to focus on schools, rural areas, and BIPOC-focused events, following the data every step of the way. That's all I have for an update today, but I'm happy to take any questions. Thanks.
April, one clarification. So with the booster shot, so let's say I got two doses of Moderna, does that mean my booster shot should be Moderna and not the Pfizer?
That's what I've read so far. The official detailed guidance hasn't been released at this time, but based on what we've seen so far, I'd say that that will be the plan moving forward.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, April, you mentioned the capacity at Good Sam here in Corvallis. Are we taking patients from other regions where their hospitals are at capacity? Or is this kind of the normal Good Sam population?
That's a great question, Commissioner Malone. I think it may be best suited for me to follow up with the hospital for a specific answer on that. I do know that as a regional hospital and a trauma center, they do see patients from a wide swath, and we do know that there is a lot of transport as needed of patients for COVID and for many other conditions, but for a specific breakdown, we would definitely need the hospital to speak to that.
Okay, and kind of a follow-up. Is Good Sam deferring some procedures that sometimes are called collective? Apparently, we need another term because our son-in-law had what could be called collective heart surgery last June, and I wouldn't say that's really very elective, but it makes it sound like cosmetic surgery or, you know, something relatively minor.
I agree that terminology is interesting. The way that Good Samaritan, our regional CEO Laura Henham put it was she prefers scheduled surgeries, and I don't believe things have changed too much since last week. When we spoke with them yesterday, they are still employing a day-to-day review of scheduled procedures.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe?
Thank you. Good morning, April. Thanks for your update this morning. The question I have really pertains to planning around the booster shots, and do you anticipate that we will be implementing mass vaccination clinics again for purposes of booster shots and/or for purposes of children once they're approved? I guess I'm just looking for a heads up as to whether or not those are concerns we should have. As you know, that's a heavy lift, and if we need to do it, we certainly should do it, but can you give us any feedback there?
Sure, Joe. That's a great question. There are many conversations happening right now around the various pathways to vaccination. And because we vaccinated so many people on any given day during the mass vaccination clinics, many people will be eligible for a vaccine, you know, on any given day. We are...our meeting with Samaritan Health Services next week. I think whatever...the strategy that we will employ will heavily rely on existing infrastructure. So when we had these mass vaccination events, for much of the time, we had very little vaccine available in the community, and we had very few places at which to receive the vaccine. So part of the work we're doing now is not only getting providers ready, like just don't forget, this is how you order, this is how many you should order, and this is your timeline once you get to this point, but also talking to the pharmacies about increasing that capacity to prepare. So there may be some much smaller, you know, version of a mass vaccine event, but I think of it as more additional events and opportunities that may come available in the community. I doubt that we're going to see 2,000 or 3,000 vaccines a day kind of operation set up at Research Stadium like we did previously, but this conversation is evolving, and we'll keep you updated.
Thank you. Kind of a follow-up on that, April. So it's recommended that they eight months after yours, second dose, if it's Pfizer or Moderna, I guess it would be helpful to...some kind of guidelines on window opportunity here. Just I assume it doesn't have to be to the day, well, a week one way or the other, and I realize at this point, you know, that probably information isn't available, but it would be helpful for the general public to have some guidance on how wide the timetable window is on the booster.
Absolutely agree with you, Commissioner. We will get some updated guidance that talks about that window of opportunity and where the recommended timeframe is for when those boosters should be delivered.
My question is a little bit different, April. I've gotten a handful of questions from people who have family members that are immunocompromised, and as you know, some of those people are very unhealthy and have a very hard time getting out to get to the site where they can get a booster. So perhaps we can also do some community education on how to handle that and how to reach out for assistance in order to get access to that third booster if they're in that kind of category where it can't be transported with these?
Yeah, this is a very important consideration. We have many people who, in our community, who find it difficult to get out to a provider's office. We do have a two-pronged kind of piece. People who are seeking in-home vaccination, they can call the Benton County Call Center and be routed through a process to ensure that they can be served. On the other hand, part of that messaging out to providers about the availability of the third dose for immunocompromised includes going through their patient rolls and contacting those patients to ensure that they can be vaccinated. And most of the providers in our area, they will make arrangements to go out to a person's home and vaccinate them. And then, of course, as the net of safety for Benton County, we can provide that service as well.
Thank you. Any other questions for Suzanne or April at this time?
So, just a comment, I appreciate getting this on the schedule. Things are changing rapidly enough, and waiting another, more than two weeks, I think we need the information. I heard something this morning, and this might be nationwide, I may need a little help on the statistics, but the youth rate of COVID infections is something greater than 20%, and that's doubled in the last two weeks. And I think trends are important to watch, and it just shows how quickly things are changing. And I guess because of the good job on getting people over 70 vaccinated, that those case rates are fairly low, but in the unvaccinated population, that is where most of the serious cases and hospitalizations are taking place. So I really appreciate the update today.
Thanks, Commissioner. I'm grateful for the vaccine, because without it, we'd be experiencing a whole different situation right now.
Commissioner Ojro, I'd like to request that I have the ability to bring forward one of my items under information sharing. I would like to do that now, because both Suzanne and April are on the call, and they can certainly contribute to this dialogue around the topic I'd like to bring up.
Certainly.
So Commissioners, kind of shifting gears on you, it's still relative to the coronavirus. Our executive committee met twice in the last week to discuss whether or not the county should change our operational procedures relative to our facilities and public access to our facilities. As you know, we've been, over the last 18 months, through a series of times where we have closed our county facilities to public access and have tried to provide services online, over the phone, or by appointment only. The executive committee, after meeting twice and discussing this topic in the last week, are recommending that we do change our current practices. Right now, our lobbies are open to the public, as they typically are under normal business circumstances. However, with the Delta variant and the surge that's currently going on, the executive committee would like to take a step back in terms of our lobbies. And what we'd really like to do is focus on, number one, ensuring as many employees as possible are teleworking. Number two, focus on providing services online and via telephone. And then, number three, as it relates to public access, if customers needed to come to one of our buildings in person, we would then schedule those appointments as necessary so that we are minimizing the number of people coming into our facilities. And so I wanted to bring that forward to you today to let you know that's what the executive committee is recommending, that we take a step back and operate focusing online, over the phone, and then by appointment only as it relates to customers accessing our buildings. I wanted to share that with you, get your feedback. Also, we did have a conversation with all the department heads last week and a update that we did, and we received, didn't receive as much feedback on this topic as I would have anticipated, but the department directors that weighed in, there was two or three of them supported taking this step. The rest of the folks were, they were either on the fence or not opposed to this, but didn't speak directly to it. But our executive committee is recommending that we move this direction.
It sounds like a fair move and something that I would support.
I guess, unless there's, Suzanne or April have other thoughts, I think this makes sense where it's, dealing with that pesky reality, and this makes sense, that things have changed. Four, five weeks ago, we were in a little different situation, but now it's, well, just hearing the hospitalization rates, and we're better off in some areas of the state. So I think it makes sense. We have had practice doing this, so it shouldn't be too hard to figure out exactly what this means as far as how we continue to do our jobs, but keeping people safe is our, is job one.
Commissioners, I should have mentioned, to give you more context, if you remember the previous risk framework that was used by the state, we are, if we were to continue to look at that risk matrix today, we would be considered in the extreme category again, which, these are the same actions we took when we were previously in the extreme category.
Thank you, Joe. I think that the recommendation from the executive team makes sense, and a reasonable precaution.
So I will be working with the executive committee tomorrow morning, as well as our public information staff, in particular Alyssa, to begin to communicate this new direction. Also, one of the things that we are concerned about is the yo-yo effect that we've talked about before. And so when I think about what this might look like over the course of the next couple of months, until we're dropping down significantly in terms of the hospitalizations and case rates, I would imagine we might be in this, you know, model for up to a couple of months. We'll have to just continue to stay in touch with Suzanne and April on case rates, positivity rates, hospitalizations. But this would not be just a weak thing, and then we'd be changing back again. I anticipate it will at least be 30 to 60 days.
With that, I do believe that we are down to the information sharing portion of our agenda. And I don't have anything to share that I did not already share last week, in terms of my meetings and activities. And so, Commissioner's Malone, why don't you have other items to share, please? Time?
Well, I guess, I'm trying to find my notes here, but had a nice conversation yesterday with Amanda Rao, I guess our local OSU extension fire specialist, and continuing my thoughts after the request a few days before the Fourth of July weekend for the county to ban fireworks. And I would like to have a broader discussion of how can we make our communities more fire-resistant? And there's a large education component that would be a long-term effort. I've mentioned the Firewise program that's been in effect for several years. Unfortunately, FDIF doesn't have that position filled in the Philomis district, and which just seems like being short-sighted. We've got a program that has proven track record and need to make it more robust. And so I'm, a couple of weeks ago, I talked to the Monroe Fire Department Board, and tonight I'm speaking with Carvallos Earl Fire, specifically on evacuation routes. But, so, long-term effort, but that's something that I'm interested in, and I think can use some, a little push to, a lot of talk about state programs and federal programs and resources coming, but we've got a vacancy locally in a program that could really, that really help. So I think that's the main thing I have to share with you today.
Thank you, Pat, for doing that. And as I mentioned to you yesterday, NPR's Think Out Loud show features the fireworks ban that occurred in Bend last year, and the proposals that are emerging in Lane County, led by Commissioner Heather Buck. So I think that we've got a good forward motion on some of those discussions occurring in our neighboring counties, and probably some energy that we can help latch on to, continue to discuss fire mitigation, prevention, education.
Well, and part of my thinking was, we do a wonderful job, Fourth of July, does that mean happy days are here again on the 5th? No, it means we're at the, either beginning, or maybe even towards the middle of an ever-lengthening fire season. So the fireworks discussion is part of, part of the overall discussion, but it's, my mind is, it shouldn't be a broader discussion than just talking about fireworks on the Fourth of July.
Excellent. Joe?
I just wanted to expand a little bit on Commissioner Malone's comments. The sheriff and Vance Croney and myself are scheduled to meet in September to have further discussions about the fireworks piece in particular and preparation for next year. And so we'll certainly update the Commissioners as that discussion evolves. Sheriff, would you like to touch on that?
Not, other than, I know Lane County's discussing that at their commission session this afternoon, and at the completion of that session, I was going to reach out to Sheriff Carroll, just kind of see how it impacts his office, how they're going to address it, and then we can kind of borrow that framework if that's what we decide to do.
Another piece is, currently, the county's working on updating the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, and Joe made a great comment last time of, this is kind of high-level, good background information, but we need to take the information that's in the plan and figure out, well, what can we do on the ground to make our communities safer? And so I look forward to further discussion, and I don't know if that ends up being an appendix or an addition to the CWPP, but it, comment really resonated with me, Joe, that high-level discussion and describing different communities, and there, out of San Vales 762, there'll be a risk assessment, mapping done, I think it's supposed to be done in the next year, that may be optimistic, but take some of the information that's being developed and fine-tune it into things we can do around our own homes or around communities to make them less fire-borne.
Thank you. Anything else? Nancy, do you have other updates?
Thank you, Zan. No update from me today.
Okay, I guess I did want to let you know that I had met with Emily Ryman, the executive director from Dev Northwest, who we hosted a little while back to talk about low-income housing and workforce housing development. As you know, they are the owner of the property down here in South Carvallos, which is one of the larger parcels that's envisioned for development in the urban renewal district. And they have had a little slowdown, they hit challenges with funding, they are kind of in-between the sweet spot for both multifamily and single-family housing in terms of what they can provide at that site. So they're working on different strategies, but more importantly, they've lost their key staff person, at least temporarily, that was our local community liaison. So whereas, Lamont Neighborhood Housing Services was very much Carvallos and Benton County-focused, Dev Northwest has got a multi-county area, and we don't have a lead person doing community relations right now between Dev Northwest and our local community. So Emily was, they're looking for someone to take that on in an acting role for a while. And if you know anyone that is interested in housing issues, that might be a good connection for Emily Ryman, be happy to pass that name along as they do their work here in Benton County and our communities. That's probably it for me, because I've been involved, again, mostly justice systems improvement-related work this last week. So with that, we are at the end of our regular agenda. Oh, no, Joe, updates from you.
Commissioner, thanks for circling back around to me. I just have one topic that I would like to engage the board in discussion on this morning. Hopefully, this will only take 10 minutes or so. I've invited Tracy Martineau to join me, our human resources director, as well as Mary Ottley, our finance director. And this particular topic, I'm just putting out there for the board to kind of use as a litmus test and get your feedback. Tracy is going to be giving a little bit of context regarding a policy we used to have an effect, and the question has come up about the possibility of reinstituting this policy and its surrounding sick leave conversion. So Tracy, I'd like to just kick it over to you, and have you give the board some context and background and get their opinions on this particular topic.
Good morning, Commissioner. As Joe said, this was intended to be just a litmus test. This came up as a result of my being approached by an employee who is also approaching retirement, wondering if there was any possibility of the board, considering the reinstatement of a policy that was ended in March of 2000. And Mary Ottley can probably provide a little bit more detail, as our historian here. And Mary Ottley can probably provide a little bit more detail as our historian here. But basically, what the policy did was provide for employees who were, at the time of their retirement, and fully eligible and qualified to receive PERS retirement benefits, would have the ability to receive a cash payout for three-fourths of their accumulated sick leave. And the remainder of that sick leave then would be used to calculate their final average salary for retirement benefits under PERS. Now, that was at a time when everyone was at a tier one, and so that sick leave counted for something with PERS. It no longer does. So it's still only the tier one employees that would be eligible for that benefit. But in March of 2000, employees who were eligible for this benefit under this policy were grandfathered in. And all new employees who were hired after this date were no longer eligible for this benefit. And so over time, you know, employees as they have retired out of our county organization have been provided with this cash out. And Mary can give a little information on, you know, what that, what those cash outs look like over time. We have, I believe, around 20 people who are left grandfathered under the old policy. But again, it's important for you to understand the financial liability that this would encounter. And then any questions that you might have. I think you can understand that with this financial benefit, why there is an interest in employees who are approaching retirement would be interested in reinstating this policy. I'm going to be quiet and let Mary talk a little bit about the history and the financial impact.
Good morning, Commissioners. And I tried to go, when I talked to Tracy yesterday, that I went step back and went, okay, so when did, when I was hired way back in the 80s or whatever it was, that there was a policy that 50%, everyone got 50% of their sick leave paid and 50% was reported to PERS. And then, I want to stay with the onset of Measure 50 or 90. Anyway, there was a reform on PERS and PERS said they would no longer be using the unused sick as a method of calculating pension going forward. And so at that time, the HR director and the finance director at the time rewrote the policy to, up it to 75% because they felt that employees were losing that benefit by not allowing, by PERS not considering it. And also, those two folks were both really near retirement. I mean, like within a year of retirement. So I've always called it the Frank D. Clark Ruggles Benefit Package. So if you ever heard, it was very, in my opinion, self-serving. However, so they put that 75% in, which is how it got to 75%. And then PERS changed the law again. And so indeed, they were using the sick leave. So it didn't really make a lot of sense. And in 2003, the current, so you're going to get a lot of more detail, but the current county administrator, John Anderson, said, let's live it. I mean, we had some really generous benefits back in there. So there's a lot of grandfathered benefits that stopped, particularly for the non-reps in that 2003 time when we rewrote the personnel policy. And so at that point, this benefit is extremely costly to the county. And so looking at the projections of what this was going to cost going forward, it was taken out of the policy. And any employee that was hired as of, I think, March 1st, 2003? Or 2000, March 1st, 2000, were grandfathered in. And there are 20 people still left. And this is non-reps, deputies, there, I don't think there's any nurses left. But there's 20 people, the liability for those 20 people at June 30th with salary and benefits is over half a million dollars. So it was an extremely generous benefit, let's say. I mean, I admit, I got it when I left, but I, so I don't know if you need any more information. It's just that it was taken out for cost. And there really wasn't a replacement at that point in time because PERS was accepting, and even to this day, we do have some employees that will choose not to be cashed out and have it added to their PERS. So it is the tier one people that this impacts. So as long as you're tier one, you can still get credit for unused sick leave. And so we have had people that said, no, I don't want you to cash it out. I want, it's my benefit to leave it in for PERS for my pension.
Nancy? So I have a couple of questions. I'm trying to think of the right way to phrase it. I guess one question would be, is there, like, do best practices chime in on this? I mean, is this a known thing? You know, what do our, what are our comparators, what are our comparators doing? You know, is this pretty common for other counties and cities to have this policy? Could you ever use me to that?
Commissioner Wise, I think I can respond to that. We haven't done a specific survey asking that specific question. However, I would say that there's a mix of cities and counties who provide some form of a sick leave cash out. Fewer and fewer all the time, but there certainly are some out there who do provide some form of sick leave cash out or a conversion.
I can tell you from, go ahead, Mary.
Yeah, we have a cap on the, and I don't know, I think if we look at comparators, we have to also look at what the sick leave cap is. So most of our employees can accrue up to 1,040 hours of sick leave. And so that, depending on how much accrual they have, mitigates that as well.
But 1,040 hours is basically six months of work, right? So that's a lot. And I can tell you from my days as an executive director of nonprofits, that we all moved away from this because it's so unpredictable. And when, it can be extremely burdensome to a budget and it's not planned. And you have to have a really big contingency fund if you have this kind of policy in place. And how do you fund it? Typically, you end up funding it by, you know, levying some sort of a surcharge on all employees in order to do so. So it's a very difficult policy to manage because it's very unpredictable and it's hardly equitable.
We do fund, the way the county has funded this is a cost allocation charge. So we do, the departments aren't responsible for it at the time of retirement, but over time, the departments pay a piece into our retirement reserve cost center. I think when, I was showing you our reserves that we had there. Right now, it's sitting at zero because we had more retirements than we had funds on hand. But it's a little bit negative. It'll come back out of the hole here in the next couple of months. But right now, it's sitting negative.
So I guess I, my feeling is, you know, I really understand wanting to, you know, support our employees the best way we can. And I would love to give all of our employees a ton of money, you know, but we have to balance supporting our employees and being good stewards of taxpayer money. So I guess at this time, I would not be interested in changing the policy unless there's some new information that, you know, comes to light.
Do I understand this correctly? The, well, so the current policy is we do not pay this out, but we're getting asked to make an exception. Is that an accurate assessment of the current situation?
Commissioners, you're not being asked to make a specific exception. We're just engaging you in whether or not the board would have an interest in restoring some sort of policy similar to what we had before. And just also providing further clarification. Tracy and Mary and I are not here recommending that you do this. We're just opening up the dialogue just to get an idea of how the commissioners feel on this particular topic. I would say that my experience over the last 30 years in many different organizations is benefits such as this, as Commissioner Osro mentioned, used to be more common. And over time, these type of benefits have been eroded, if you will, in many, many organizations over time. But you're not being asked to make a specific exception. We're just asking you if you would be so inclined to consider a new policy being developed or that old policy being resurrected.
Well, I can tell you that I would not want to resurrect the old policy. I don't think it is equitable and I don't think that it is healthy from the standpoint of everyone's mental and physical health. People should be using their vacation and accumulating six months worth of a sick leave. It seems to me also to be not necessarily a good practice. I know some people are very, very, very healthy, but other people aren't. And it just, it couldn't feel like a good approach to me. And I am very uncomfortable with the potential financial ramifications and how that will land on all of us and on taxpayers.
Yeah, a lot of those lines, so we're talking about 20 employees and we have in the neighborhood of 600. So just in terms of fairness, I would not be inclined to have this back.
Commissioner, thank you for taking the time to consider this concept today. Appreciate your feedback and direction.
Thanks for the history lesson. Okay, Commissioners, I think we can move on to the other topics on our agenda. Just a reminder that we do have two executive sessions slated, one for purposes of real estate. And Nick Kirth has just joined us. And the, about the maximum amount of time that we can afford for that executive session is 30 minutes. And then we have a second executive session that's slated for today as well. And I know the board has another meeting scheduled at 1:00. So we'll have to limit the second executive session to 30 minutes as well.
Well, thank you. And so at this point, I am going to not close the meeting, but we are going to shift into executive session. And we need to ask all people that are not related to that executive session, all staff and guests, to leave. And we will be locking the room. We also will be, have to give John some time at the board's office to clear out and close down his equipment. So we will take the five-minute break and as we clear the room.